Good evening, let's call this meeting to order. Tuesday, June 5th, 2012, the time is 6:06. Meeting of the whole for ELOC and county facilities. Roll call, please.
Berks.
Here.
Langham.
Here.
Maxwell.
Here.
Ince.
Here.
Michael.
Here.
Mitchell.
Here.
Bowser.
Here.
O'Connor.
Here.
Petrie.
Here.
Wilson Mary.
Here.
Richards.
Here.
Silas.
Here.
Schrader.
Here.
Wyble.
Here.
Al.
Here.
Ammons.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
Bensel.
Here.
Berksen.
Here.
Carter.
Here.
Coward.
Here.
Overfield.
Here.
James.
Here.
Jay.
Here.
Kibler.
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum. Ms. Berksen and Ms. Court did contact me and said they would not be able to make the meeting tonight. I seek approval of the minutes for the committee of the whole for May 8th, 2012. Moved by Mr. Mitchell, second by Mr. James. Discussion of the minutes, please. Do we already have that, Mr. Betts? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Seek approval of the agenda and the addendum. Moved by Mr. Carter, second by Mr. Kurtz. Mr. Kurtz?
Yes. I am going to remove the meeting on the microphone box.
Microphone, microphone.
Sorry. 8H on the ELOC agenda to please be removed from the agenda tonight.
Any objection to that? Any objection? Okay, see none, we'll take that off. I also would like to ask Mr. Kurtz and Mr. Betts respectfully at the end of your session to discuss whether or not you want to have the meeting next month in July. It doesn't have to be set in stone, but we know what you'll say. But generally speaking, we try not to have July call meetings, so either we won't have them or maybe we'll just have one or something like that. Any other changes to the agenda? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Public participation. We have one person who wants to speak tonight, Ms. Deb Klein.
Do my address or anything?
Just say name and where you're from here.
Okay, my name is Deb Klein. I live at 1043 County Road, Seymour. My husband, Bill, and I, as well as our mother, Mary Klein, are the property owners of the farm and buildings being discussed tonight. We are part of a family farm operation that spans six generations. Last winter, our family traded a farm we owned north of Mansfield for this new farm. We'd always wanted to get closer to our home, which is now within two miles. We were thrilled to have the opportunity to own this farm, which also includes irrigation for our seed corn fields. Along with the farming acreage came an existing set of buildings. These buildings are way too nice to abandon or let deteriorate. We need to find a use for them. They were originally built in 1989 as part of an agricultural research farm for a company called ICI Americas, which later became part of Syngenta. Many of these agricultural companies have consolidated their businesses and their locations, so the need for this sort of office, lab, and shop by another agricultural company is limited. That's why we're here tonight. We have found another tenant that will take care of the site, as well as not impact the surrounding agricultural environment. They do not qualify for the current ag use designation despite some of their research having agricultural applications. They will provide good jobs for Champaign County. We, our children, and our grandchildren all live close to this site and farm adjacent, so most of all, it's important to the Kleins to find a good match. We have been proven good stewards of the land. We and our family are in this for the long haul. Therefore, we are respectfully asking to change our zoning classification on this building site to light industrial. Thank you.
Is there any, anybody else want to participate in public participation at this time? Okay, thank you. Communications from the board. Let's go up to Ms. Petrie.
Thank you very much. Communication is a belated happy birthday to Ralph Langingham.
Happy birthday, Ralph. Okay, Mr. Kurtz.
Thank you. On your desk is a letter that I received a couple of days ago from Mr. James.
Microphone, please. Look close to the microphone.
Am I not hearing? Hello, is that better? Okay. This letter was sent to me and he asked me to disseminate it to the entire board. It concerns PCBs and how it's affected this gentleman, and he wanted the board and to be placed on the record. I've already given a copy to the secretary, so that this is for your information. Thank you.
Any other communications? Okay, see none.
Good evening, county facilities, fiscal plan monthly report. Any questions, comments? Yes.
Oops, sorry. I'm looking at this here and it says one week is 435 hours with four, full staff, and then I'm looking at the total hours here of what has worked, and of course, there was a holiday also. But then there's also 209 hours of comp time, just wondered where that is. I noticed we don't have any overtime, which is great, but you know, in some weeks, it's 300 hours or whatever, and if a full regular work week's 435 hours, then how come we're still got a lot of comp left out for them?
The comp time is accrued for on-call and on weekends, and they use that scheduled as a vacation time, so they've always got a certain amount on books.
So this all came for extra, other than just what happens in the normal?
That is correct.
Okay, thanks.
Other questions or comments? An entertaining motion to receive and place on file. Moved by Mr. James, seconded by Mr. Carter. Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same. Motion carries. Our monthly report for the Art Bartel construction projects.
On page 11 of your agenda, you'll see the monthly spreadsheet. The only activity has been for the East Campus Site Stormwater Project, and just a partial billing for this month of $1,290 to Burns, Clancy Associates for just shop drawing review, office administration for this part of the project. We expect the material to be delivered on-site this week, and hopefully, maybe Friday or Monday, actual construction will be starting.
Questions, comments? Dan?
Sorry, we have anything else with Russell Construction?
Excuse me?
Or is this the end of what we have with Russell Construction?
Yes, that is correct.
Because they've dissolved.
The next matter is the CCDI Inspection Coalition of Citizens with Disabilities.
I was hoping to have another handout for you tonight. The CCDI did make a return inspection last Thursday, and we had 75 to 80 percent of the items they noted. I hopefully corrected, and I have not seen a copy, or a copy has not been forwarded to our office yet from the Regional Planning Commission. I expect to have something soon, and we'll just keep on moving on it.
Just a question, do you think we're on track to what you presented as the cost it will be for the county? I think it was $17,000.
Yes, at this time, I do not have, I'm still waiting on a couple more estimates to hopefully get the price down, see where we're at.
Thanks.
Other questions or comments? Moving on to Chair's Report. This will be easy, I don't have a report. Other business, the other business I would have is that we have, a number of us who are on the committee have reviewed the RFPs. I have my stack of material, which is about this, I have gone through it. I am willing to give it to others, and Jan is going to take it tomorrow, and then she's going to give it to someone else, so if people have that material, they're willing to share without having to duplicate, that would be very, very useful. Geraldo, you want it, who?
Is there any way you could expedite that a little quicker than going 20, going, making 27 rounds? I would like to have one that I could flavor and look at and review, instead of being on a timeline and then try to pass it on to somebody else.
Go ahead, Deb.
Well, board members were told at the last meeting that if they wanted to request it, that they could, and board members who requested it have been provided with it. I will say, it's a stack of documents about this deep, so if you can share them, of course, we will appreciate it, because even the time it takes to produce them is staff time spent on that, but if you want to request it, all you need to do is contact either me or the sheriff, and we'll make sure you get them.
I know, Patzy got it set, Carol has it set, I have it set, and I'm absolutely willing to share immediately. Chris?
Tom, I'm sure I know the answer to this, but I assume these were submitted non-electronically?
We have electronic versions, but we are not releasing the electronic versions, because these documents are only to be provided to county board members.
So even county board members can obtain the electronic copy?
Well, if you want to sign something that says you'll keep it electronically.
Sure.
Okay.
That being said, Jen's has mine, she'll pass it on and work it out. Designation of items to be placed in consent and agenda, I don't think we have anything that's for action, so there's nothing on consent or non-consent.
No, meeting next month.
Oh, the meeting next month. Mr. Jay, I am going to be in Vermont in July, so it's up to you, because I'm definitely not going to be at the meeting next month. I see no reason to have it unless you think there's a good reason.
If there's no reason, I would just as soon not have it either.
Okay. Is that a concurrence of the members of the committee of the whole? Anyone dissent from that? I'm going to consider that unanimous, we won't have a meeting next month.
Okay, Mr. Kurtz for Environment and Land Use.
Good evening. Okay. 8A, our first item on the agenda, recreation and entertainment license, Champaign County Fair Association, Champaign County Fair Association, July 20th to the 28th, 2012. I have Mr. Mitchell and Ms. Ammons as a second. They really jumped on that, they liked the county fair, I don't blame them, I liked the county fair, too. I liked those fries that they sell, those French fries, ooh, those are good. Are there any discussion on this entertainment license? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, B, zoning case 716 AM-12, Williams and Deborah Klein and Mary Klein, request to amend the zoning map to change the designation from Ag 1 to I-1 Light Industry zoning district to allow limited reuse of a former agricultural chemical research facility.
Make it through.
Whoa, I have Mr. James and Mr. Kibler, second. Let me make a statement first, in the packet, the ZBA had not made its recommendation as yet. We have that recommendation here, it's on your desk. The zoning board of appeals voted unanimously to recommend enactment at their May 31st, 2012 meeting, and the, all the information is in that packet. It's discussion, Aaron.
To eliminate any possible conflict, I'm going to abstain from this.
Okay. Do I have?
Point for, point for, he needs to state why.
I'm sorry, what's that?
He needs to state why.
I need to, why?
Due to business relationship with the Kleins, my electrical business.
Okay, that'll, that'll do. Thank you, Aaron.
Chris? I have a question for Mr. Hall. We've been provided a reasonable summary, I think, of what Syngenta and ICI before that did at this location. Was that activity conducted by right because the research that they were doing and the production they were doing was related to agriculture? I'm trying to get a sense for what, to what degree the zoning ordinance can restrict industrial usage of any, if it has any agricultural character.
As far as I know, there was no permit for that. I've seen various explanations that there was some seed research being done. If there was any seed research being done, then it was absolutely exempt. Agricultural chemical research in and of itself is not exempt, but in the records, I have seen some evidence of seed research, so at this point, I'm assuming that that was in fact exempt when it was constructed.
Okay, so if any, regardless of the scale, regardless of the specifics of what's being done, if the research is, as you say, seed research or something related to agriculture, then you can essentially operate in the agricultural zone by right. But if a activity of exactly the same character but being done on something not related to agriculture is done, that would require an industrial zoning?
Yeah, seed research can happen anywhere in our zoning jurisdiction, even in, literally, it can happen anywhere, and we have no authority over it.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Hall, the field.
Just for point of clarification, on the requirements for the land resource management plan, since we haven't determined that all of these policies are ordinances, are we now moving forward to utilize the land resource management plan as the absolutes when someone is rezoning their property? So do we have this in the package because it's for the future? Are we utilizing these policies as ordinances? I guess I just needed some clarification, because I was a little bit confused as to why we had such a thick packet, and all of these, all of the criteria had to be met utilizing the land resource management plan as if they were all ordinances. So could you give me some clarification on that?
Yes, the LRMP is not an ordinance, it's simply a plan. It has goals and policies. They are this county board's adopted land use policies, and so they play a big role in your decisions about land use. It doesn't have to be limited just to the LRMP. We have begun including that other item about, let's see. Well, with map amendments, we've always considered the, at least for some time, the LaSalle and Sinclair factors, but literally, a map amendment is one of the least constrained decisions you make, and if there's more information that needs to be brought to bear, that can be done, but at a minimum, it would be your adopted land use policies.
Okay, so when we are rezoning these properties, based on what the actual usage is, I'm absolutely in support of what they are trying to accomplish out there, and I'm not trying to convolute this, I just would like to have maybe a better understanding. I understand we passed a land resource management plan, so every time we have a case, when we're going to rezone a property, we now are utilizing all of the land resource management plan package just like this, so everyone has to follow all of the policies as if they're ordinances.
The degree of conformity is up to the board. The ZBA tends to look at the policies as things that have to be met, but again, the county board has great discretion in map amendments, so I would not want you to think that those things have to be followed like regulations, because they're not.
Okay, thank you for that clarification, I appreciate it.
John?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just if I could go back to what the point that Mr. Alex had brought up about this particular facility, I think to more clarify exactly what this facility, because I've known of this facility ever since its existence or its genesis, and that I knew people who worked there over the years, especially when the facility was owned by Syngenta, large international agricultural business. When you think of chemical research out there, I think the first thing that probably comes to mind is they're out there mixing raw chemicals to get something, and that's not at all what was going on out there. Actually, I think a better term would be weed research, because exactly what was going on out there were, they were using RA-established, EPA-approved, state EPA-approved, and federal EPA-approved chemicals out there to see what kind of benefits they could get from crop protection with respect to weed eradication, and I think there may have been some for insects, too, but it was all about crop protection. There was no mixing of chemicals or combinations that were not approved, but there are no raw materials being brought in to make, it wasn't a chemical vat being brought out there. I think if you did a soil site test out there, you wouldn't probably find anything higher than what you would find from the standpoint of residuals in a normal farming field out there, the row crop field out, anywhere here in the county or any other county. So just for that clarification, it was for research, it was specifically for row crops in particular, and like I said, all the chemicals that were used out there were licensed by the state and federal EPA.
Thank you. Ms. Petrie?
Thank you very much. I certainly am for reuse of buildings, and I do appreciate that the ZBA unanimously approved this. That said, I do have some major issues with this zoning change, and the reason I have the issues with the zoning change has to do with what this then opens up down the line. When you look at the list of possible uses under an I-1, this is like opening Pandora's box to have this zoning changed to that. It has nothing to do with the present petition, I'm looking down the line. I did have an exchange with John to see if I could figure out a way to support this by discussing with him, putting something in the special use that when the, or the potential user is no longer that user, that it, that this revert back to Ag 1. If that was something we could consider, I could support this. The second thing is if you look at, I believe it's page 59, yes, page 59 of our packet, if you look at B2, in the I-1 district, it states that this zoning should be in areas suitable for light, industrial, and manufacturing purposes, and generally be connected to public sanitary sewer. This is not in that kind of location, nor is it connected to a public sanitary sewer, so there is a lot of forgiveness that needs to be going on to enable this without us being certain that the door then gets closed when and if the proposed use is done, and it should revert back to Ag 1. When you look at the area out there, it's totally surrounded by agricultural land, so those are my concerns. If we can come to some way of adjusting this to take those into consideration, I can support it. If we can't, then I can't support it.
John, would you please respond, and then I'll go back to the discussion.
The paragraph B2 on page 59 that you referred to, that is simply a general description of where the I-1 district occurs. It's not from the zoning ordinance, it has no regulatory authority, it's just what you should normally expect.
Steve?
I've known Bill Klein and Deb for 30 years, and O'Connor known them since they were born. They're not going to sell that farm, the family buys something, they buy it for the long haul. He's got two sons involved in that operation, and they're not going anywhere, and I think there's going to be a lot of people in this room six feet under before they'd ever get rid of that farm.
Pies, did you, you had your hand up. All right, you want to sit in my, sit in my chair? I warmed it up for you.
You have to. Yes, two questions for John. One, Ms. Petrie talked about other uses for light industry, could you summarize what those could be?
Well, in fact, they're listed on pages 60 through 62 of the finding of fact that's in the agenda.
Okay, second question then is, she mentioned a possible reverting back to Ag 1. Is that even possible? Can you have reversions?
If this board would impose a condition of that nature and the petitioner accepted it, you could, you could impose that condition, but the courts have always maintained that the petitioner needs to accept any condition.
Okay, thank you. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, we'll have Ms. Cheveria from the RPC. This is the RPC work plan update and the planning contract work plan for information only. Thank you.
Seems like I was just here not too long ago. The first item that I have to speak with you tonight about is the status update of our current year work plan. Right now, we are about 40 percent complete with the tasks that you all outlined for us to do last year, between November, or December 1st of last year and November 30th of this year. More specifically, we have about 18 items on that work plan, and 13 have been started, we have completed six of them. We do have a couple of items on last year's work plan that were rolled over into this year's work plan. The first one was the LISA update. Committee time on that project took longer than the estimate we provided last year, so it did go until about, I believe, February or March of this work plan year, and required about 85 extra hours of time out of this year's work plan to complete that. And then item 2011-18, it's an ordinance regarding the office of the state fire marshal, so we have some of that complete, but it's one that has rolled over from last year as well. And then we had another item from this year's work plan that so far that we have completed that took extra time, it's 2012-18. So with that, we have a total of 245 hours that we are looking to postpone from the current year work plan for items that we have not yet done to a future year's work plan if you all decide to move that way. So basically, the delays were because of the LISA process and also defining the best prime farmland process that went in line with that earlier this year. At the bottom of the memo on your page 82 of your packet, you'll see that we have a recommendation for moving seven different items or reducing their hours from this year's work plan to make up for the hours that we had to spend on those LISA and best prime farmland projects. And so those are highlighted on the status table on pages 83 and 84. While this is for information only, it is something we are recommending for this year. If there's anything else we wanted to cover here. That's LRMP implementation, yes. I'm sorry.
I was going to say, you recommended it, yeah, it's for information, I'm sort of...
We recommend it now, everything tonight's for information only. We want to come back here in August to look for approval of the next year's work plan if you want to, and also to help finalize the status of this year's work plan. We have, we still have work we can do in the meantime, so.
We're not asking for any action tonight.
Right.
Okay. Anything else, Susan, on that?
Not on the LRMP part.
Okay, we want to move on towards the next item with the planning work contract work plan.
If there are no other questions on the staff report, I'd be happy to.
I'm sorry, any questions on this portion of her presentation? Okay.
All right.
Move on.
All right, so for the next agenda item, we have the proposed fiscal year 2013 work plan, and I believe that starts on approximately... And I believe that starts on approximately on page 85 of your packet. Working with Deb, we included a 2% salary increase provisionally until you decide to approve or not approve this work plan. That goes in line with anticipated cost of living increases. And so that contract amount that we are talking about would be $71,922. And then in the packet, you'll have three different attachments. The first one is Attachment A, the general work plan proposed for next year, and it includes 1,350 hours focusing on implementing the LRMPL, recycling, and some general planning services requests that would be at your behest to our group. And then Attachment B contains the specifics of what we propose to do for you for the LRMPL implementation. We did this in coordination with John Hall, as always, and we do our best to make these estimates, obviously, with the LISA and the best prime farmland. We find that we're a little bit short, but that happens. We do what we can to provide the estimates for you tonight and the costs associated with each item in the proposed work plan. And then Attachment C is not a part of the proposed work plan. It's just items in the LRMPL that are slated for the first three years of implementation after the adoption of the LRMPL. So it's kind of like a laundry list that you can choose from. If you don't like anything in the proposal that we have for you in attachments A and B. So we can move things around if you'd like. So what we're looking at, like I said, is to talk about this tonight, just provide it for information. And we would love to get any comments you have by about mid-July, so we can come back to you in August with a more finalized proposal.
John?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like for you to consider dropping item 11 and 12 out of your 13 work plan. I don't think that we're in a position to take on that kind of a responsibility. And that's a $23,283 plan that I think is premature.
He's talking about items on page 91 of the work plan, proposal work plan, I believe? 87?
Well, it's 87 in the one I'm looking at.
Oh, you're looking at the short list.
11 and 12, you're talking on page 87, John?
Yes.
Okay. On page 87, 11 and 12. Carol, will you next?
I just wanted to ask, I want to go back to the other one. I didn't understand why. I remember you all bringing us the work plan for 12, and then you went over 80 hours on 12's work plan, and I don't see and understand why that is. And then I cannot understand the difference between what the zoning and planning department's supposed to do and why we are contracting all of this with you. I don't understand that.
Of course. For the first item, the 80 hours, and John and I can also speak to this, with the LISA document, we had a work plan, we had a plan for completing that particular project that started last fiscal year. And because it was not completed in time for the end of last fiscal year, staff was asked to continue with the process, Susan Monti in particular, to continue with the committee working to make sure that document was finalized. And she had a lot of back and forth with committee members providing new information. So it was 80 hours of time spent from this work plan to finish it.
So do you exclusively, your department exclusively does do work for the county? Is that what you do?
To my knowledge, that's the case. We have, that's our contract right now. I don't know if they work with others. I don't believe they do for planning services.
Stan?
I wondered if John might comment on item 11 and 12, why that was put in there, because we need a better clarification of what you think. I tried to tell the group that I thought that, you know, we needed to have this done and that eventually with some of the new codes coming from the state that we need to be looking at this. And I just needed you to say why you thought it needed to be in there.
Well, it only needs to be in there if the committee is interested in knowing how feasible adoption of a building code is. Frankly, I wish we could have provided more information at last month's meeting, but it was clear that the amount of work that had been proposed just wasn't enough to answer those questions. Now, I think that Susan has told me that there's no guarantee that items 11 and 12 would take 450 hours, but I believe that 450 hours should be ample in order to provide the kinds of quality information this committee likes to see and, in fact, needs to see before they make a decision like that. It may not take 450 hours, but it could be done in 450 hours.
Chris?
I would, I guess, concur with John Jay on this. I mean, I think, I'm going to put on my Kreskin hat here and make a prediction, but I don't see there being political support on this county board for advancing the idea of a building code, for better or for worse. It does strike me that there are some pretty compelling issues that we are facing regarding, you know, potential ways of funding the airport, looking at what other counties are doing to make up for lost state revenue. I mean, it seems like there are a lot of things that if we had a skilled planner available for 450 hours, it seems like there are better ways that we could be spending their time and our money. So I guess I would challenge my colleagues on the county board to come up with some other suggestions for how we might be able to use those hours, even if they're not strictly related to the LRMPL.
We will present other options to you, Chris. We have discussed that at length. We wanted to make sure that there were contingencies just in case of this. So we will have those for you as well. I have Ralph.
Microphone.
I'm sorry. Microphone, please, Ralph.
Receiving the note now, Ralph.
Has everything calmed down now? I'd like to make two observations. First of all, this is for information only.
That's correct, sir.
Secondly, the matter of a building code is something we've been batting back and forth, and I see no reason why we should avoid finding out about it.
Thank you. Carol, I'm sorry. Steve, you haven't talked on this subject.
How many hours have we got in building codes with what Susan's already done?
215.
200, if you didn't hear, there's already 215 hours in this project. I have Steve. Was, is there any other discussion on the, okay, Patsy?
Well, I made this comment when the contract came before us for this year, and I not changed my mind, one iota, in that this arrangement, I find, not in the best interest of the use of the taxpayer money and the best interests of planning. And this having to shift hours, if we were running, had a planning office that was doing all of this, if something ran over, things would be shifted. We wouldn't be, say, over 80 hours over because we spent too much time on the LISA because that was necessary, and therefore we don't do this. This arrangement is just so inefficient and not best practice in relationship to planning.
Steve?
Irrelevant comment, I'm sure, but the best possible decision we could make would be to have a tombstone carved and inscribed Rest in Peace for this program at 7:40 PM on June 5th, 2012. I'd feel a lot better.
Thank you, Mr. O'Connor. Okay. Any other discussion on this? Carol?
Since it's for information only, I think it's important that the board provide information as to what the board wants to be done in 2013. That's really critical. The other thing is that some of the activities, like recycling events coordination, I would not recommend, I won't be here, that you spend 150 hours on coordinating recycling events where the city of Urbana, the city of Champaign, avoid all of them have recycling programs. I think there needs to be some shifting in relationship to this. I agree with Ms. Petrie that there needs to be looking at our own planning department in relationship to what services we really, really want RPC to focus on, i.e., maybe the building code should be just one thing. I don't know. But the board needs to make a recommendation as to what's most important in the use of this time and not just kind of general projects. And I find the recycling one to be a general project. I don't know, I don't recall a conversation at this board level saying we want a coordinated recycling project done and why we should be paying for that.
Jan?
Well, this is not the type of recycling that the cities do. This is special events where you're collecting things like appliances and computers. And each year that we've done this, the amount that has been saved from going into the landfill just keeps going up and up and up. And I think that is very important, and I would support that wholeheartedly.
And if I could just add to that, the cities do have those major recycling events, but the only way county residents can participate is if the county is also participating in the coordination of those recycling events. So those are county-wide events, and everyone's putting resources towards them.
Okay. Thank you. We'll get back to the board next month.
In August?
In August, yes. No, we won't have anything in July, hopefully. Stayed at the moment. All right, let's move on. AE, oh, wait. Oh, you got the recycling. Okay. We'll go to F. Approval of a resolution approving a partial release of judgment lien on property at 1211 West Washington, Champaign.
So moved.
Stan, second. Mr. Keebler. Discussion. Joe?
There was a drafting error in the resolution. The case number in the second paragraph, should we read 2010 OV148?
What page is that on?
It's on the resolution that was handed out tonight.
Oh, the resolution, okay.
And the phrase memorandum of judgment in paragraphs two and four should read judgment lien. And in the third paragraph, the word, phrase memorandum of judgment should just read judgment. I have a corrected version, but these are only errors of form. And I would ask that any motion to approve the resolution include those changes.
Thank you. Any, that's some, Matt? You want to move that?
Yeah.
Okay. We already have a motion on the floor. Except to accept the change.
I made the motion. That's fine by me with the change.
Okay. Stan?
And Keebler.
Okay, on second. Got it. Okay. Carol?
I just want to, I don't understand what this is.
Okay. Want to explain?
Bernard Ramos is the title holder of several parcels in the city of Champaign, or throughout, he's the title holder of a few parcels in the city of Champaign. This is a problem property. The liens on the property far exceed the value of the property. The, his attorney has worked out a deal which would allow the transfer of this property with the release of liens. The transfer would allow the property to be put to productive use. But in order for the deal to happen, the county would have to release its judgment lien as to this property. This release would not release the judgment lien as to any other properties owned by Bernard Ramos in the county.
And what would be your recommendation for the county board to support that?
Well, I'm of two minds on this. I think it's ultimately a policy call for the county. I think of, I have two functions in this case. One is as a prosecutor in the criminal contempt case. And as a prosecutor, it's difficult to stomach negotiating with someone who's wanted on a warrant for ignoring the court's orders. But taking off that hat and putting on my hat as a civil attorney for the county, this is a transaction which would put the property to productive use. It would, Mr. Ramos is receiving no money from this transaction. I think the city of Champaign wants this transaction to happen because it would put the property to productive use. And as a purely civil matter, I would, I think it's a commendable resolution.
I just wanted to ask him what the productive use would be.
It's my understanding that a residence is going to be built on this property.
It'll have taxes on it.
Back on the tax rolls.
Stan?
Well, I guess the way I looked at it, I'm like, as far as Ramos is, as much trouble as they've been counting, I wouldn't want to see them get any leg up. But when I looked at the facts of this and you look at the lien holders, there would probably be a possibility we wouldn't collect anything even if it ever did come to be sold. So we're getting $1,000 out of that from what I'm reading. So my guess is we still have the other liens, and they're still going to be having their day in court, so I see it as a no-win situation. We ought to just go ahead and approve it so we can get back to better use and get it out of the hands of the people that now have it. But one question, when they cut those checks, because I've been at some real estate deals and I know how real estate agents are, all those checks will be cut to the different entities and signed right then and there, not that, you know, like me, I would want all the money in my hand and I'd leave the room and never come back. But I mean, they'll cut them out to the proper authorities.
The transaction's going to be handled through Mr. Ramos's local attorney.
And so we're lucky to be getting that $1,000 at this point.
You're correct. If this were, if all the liens were foreclosed on in the normal order priorities, we would not receive any money.
Thank you.
Chris and Patsy. Microphone, please, Chris. Who is Paul Zaruki? What's his?
Paul Zaruki is a local property owner. I believe he's the purchaser in this transaction.
So I'm sorry, he's the purchaser?
He's the person who's building the residence on.
Okay, then who are Robert D. and Linda Parr?
May I have a moment? Excuse me.
Yeah, sorry. The only reason I'm asking Mr. Zaruki was on the letter that was, was there a copy of the letter that Mr. Gordon sent to you and to the city of Champaign?
No, you are correct. It is the Parrs who are the purchaser. If I can have a moment, I can answer your questions.
Just wanted to make sure we understood who all the parties were in this unusual transaction. Patsy?
Mr. Fletcher, I went out to West Washington, and there's nothing labeled 1211. I had trouble identifying what this property was, and I didn't have a plat map with me to go with the descriptions. Can you help me? Or did he leave?
I'm sorry, you want me to describe the property to you?
I went out to look at it, and there's nothing 1211 marked on West Washington.
I'm not exactly sure what you're asking me to do.
Well, is it basically a fenced vacant lot is what it, oh, that's what it is. Okay, thanks.
Mine is not a substantive question at all. I just want to, when we do vote on this, I am going to abstain because my office has a longstanding litigation pattern with Mr. Zaruki and with Mr. Ramos.
Thank you. All right, any further discussion? All right, all in favor? I'm sorry. Apologize. We're still waiting on the answer to my question. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, Chris. Wants to know who everybody is. Okay. One second. Mr. Betts? I'm sorry.
This is going to take me a few minutes. I apologize. I note that he's not listed in the closing documents, and I'm not sure why he was listed on that letter. Let me, I can make a phone call and I can get him.
Okay, no, that's fine. He's not a party to the transaction, though, as far as you know?
That's correct.
Okay. I think that's good enough for me. Thanks. Thank you. All right, any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. I had a note this afternoon. Then finally, on G, final recommendation to the county board for zoning ordinance text amendment. Request preliminary recommendation for approval of a text amendment to the Champaign County zoning ordinance in zoning case 701-AT-11 to amend certain wind farm standard conditions. So moved. Ms. Mosia, second. Mr. Schroeder. This comes back to us from an approval in May, and we've gone through the process and we did a preliminary approval back in May. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Monthly report. You have a monthly report from May on your desk. And I don't have any other business, any other business? What's that? Oh, July? We have nothing for July, Mr. Chair?
Well, it's up to you.
No, I'm not coming back in July unless anybody else wants to join me for a little picnic. But we don't have anything on the agenda for July, so we won't have anything on our agenda then. Do we have anything on the consent? Is G? G?
I'm sorry, F, you have an abstain?
I don't know. Oh, abstain.
That's right. So only G on the?
Thank you. So just G is on the, and that's it for us. Thank you.
Okay, next act. Part of other business, I seek approval of the closed session minutes for May 2012, sessions one and two. Ms. Rosal, second. Mr. Mitchell, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We have two closed sessions tonight. One, well, we have two on the agenda, but Mr. Fletcher tells me we don't need the one.
I'm moving that we enter into closed session pursuant to 5 ILCS 120/2C3 to consider the performance of the occupant of a public office. I further move that the following individuals remain present. The recording secretary.
Second. Second, Mr. Alex. Roll call.
Kurtz?
Yes.
Lightnington?
Yes.
Glasswell?
Yes.
McGinn?
Yes.
Vilew?
Yes.
Voucher?
Yeah.